Everyone, I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. I'll begin by noting that present with me is Commissioner Lee Jones and Commissioner Penny Giffens. And we'll begin with our commissioner's statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our public, county's public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will turn to department updates. We'll begin with the Health Department, Ms. Cottle.
Good morning. Thanks for allowing me to come again today. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to mention. The first is just to remind the community that last week we announced a community COVID testing site that will be coming later this month. And plans for that are, moving forward, we're on track for that opening later this month. We do not have an exact date yet as we're still working through preparing the site and those kinds of details. It is a collaboration that we would not be able to have this site without this collaboration. So the Monroe County Health Department is receiving a grant from the State Health Department that will provide some seed funding, but also supplies and equipment materials to operate the clinic. The county government, the commissioners, thank you for pitching in and just being willing to support this to make sure that it happens. IU Health Bloomington, the city, Indiana University, everyone has pitched in and is seeing the value in this testing site. So we're pleased that it will be coming. A couple of things about it, it will operate very much like the Optum site. It will have online registration. It will have more limited hours. It's thirty-five hours a week. So the likelihood that it will take walk-ins is pretty low. It will mostly be appointments. But there will be some weekends, some Saturday hours, and there will be some evening hours. So we hope that that will provide accommodations to individuals who need tests on Saturday as well as through the week. The State Health Department, Indiana Health Department, contracts with Optum to provide the Optum sites throughout the state. And those are done on a month-to-month basis. And they did inform us yesterday that those are scheduled now through November. So the testing site, we will have Optum through November at least. And then at the end of the month, we will add our community testing site. So very, very happy to have both of those that will be in operation. Because the more testing that is available to our residents, the easier it is for them to get the testing that they need. So we're pleased to learn that Optum will remain operational in Monroe County for at least another month. And again, those are on month-to-month basis. So we don't know from one month to the next. We find, we will find out in November what happens next. As we continue to monitor the virus activity and look at our numbers, we all know that the state of Indiana is in seeing, is seeing increased in cases. It's concerning our local numbers while still pretty good. We are seeing small increases in our daily moving average. And so we want to watch that very carefully. This is not a time for people to relax. The weather is going to be moving us indoors more where transmission is easier. And I mentioned this last week. It's just, it is time to refocus and keep our attention on that six-foot distancing that we need to do. Continue to wear our masks when we are around non-household members. And quite frankly, household members, if somebody isn't feeling really well and you can't distance, it can still be a safety measure to wear that at home in certain circumstances. Avoid crowds. Stay home when you are ill and continue good hand washing and hand hygiene practices. So we can stay focused and work together and we can smash COVID and its transmission through the winter. But I also want to say that any gathering, large or small, can pose a risk. And so what we're finding when we talk to people, not just locally, but we're hearing this across the state, people feel very safe when they're with friends or family. And they often let down their guard even though they may not be household members in their family. And so again, we just need to be very cautious. Practice those precautions that we have talked about all along. And we can, we can overcome this together, but we will all have to do our part in smashing COVID. And we can get through this fall and winter, hopefully, if we continue our distancing, that six-foot distance and washing our hands, staying away from others when we're sick, wearing our masks, we can keep transmission of this virus at a low level or a moderate level through the fall and winter, and we will come out better on the other side of the year.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Well, I, I've noticed that I'm hearing widely varying times as to how long it takes to get test results back. Is this a matter of them being sent to different labs or?
It is, and how, how busy a place is. And when we see surges, we also see that wait times for results often slow because there's just more demand. So all of those things can play a part. With the new testing site, they'll, they will use a variety of labs, so they all won't be going to one place. So there may be good and bad in that, but I think part of it is to spread the, those tests out so that they're not all going to one place and, and then having a backlog.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
I know that you talked about trick-or-treating last Friday at the press conference. Would you mind repeating those guidelines?
Sure. I, and I did not bring those down to the space with me. But the CDC has guidelines out for not just Halloween, but all the different holidays that are coming up and how we might do them a little differently. They have classified things as low to moderate to higher risk. So traditional trick-or-treating, traditional trunk-or-treating are considered higher-risk activities. But there are ways to do those things and make them much safer. So instead of maybe someone coming to my door in groups and everybody sticking their hands in my candy dish and taking out what they want, maybe I set up a, set up a table in my driveway. I, you know, wash my hands and prepare the goodies and set them out so that it can be kind of a walk-by and pick it up. And they, the children still get to show off their costumes. We get to enjoy seeing that. They get their candy, but it's all done in a safer manner. With trunk-or-treating, it can use the similar guidelines, but also making sure that those vehicles are spaced very widely apart. Twelve to fifteen feet apart between them. Making sure that that social distancing is occurring as children come through in lines and that they're not gathering in pockets, those kinds of things. But also considering different things that you might do at home. So can you have a scavenger hunt at home in your yard or in your house? Can you kind of do a neighborhood walk-through? Again, not in large groups, but where you can look for different things. Do a scavenger hunt throughout the neighborhood. Again, people get to see the children in their costumes. They kind of get to show those off. But maybe they aren't going door-to-door trick-or-treating. Traditional hayrides are considered to be higher risk because you're in a small space with people sitting close to you that may not be in your family unit. But again, there are ways, maybe your, your own household can do its own little hayride or something like that. So there are ways to do it. Going to a haunted walk or something like that. Some of the parks, I think, have come up with ways to do walks so they can distance people, but they're not, again, indoors. Doing a traditional haunted house would be a higher-risk activity because you're inside. There's generally lots of screaming going on because it's a haunted house. And so that would not be a safe activity. But you can make those things safer. So again, I would say we want people to be creative. This is a creative time of year, and so put those creative juices to good work. I know Commissioner Thomas talked earlier too about thinking about how your costumes, how you want those to be. And so, you know, maybe this is a time for the doctors and the nurses to be the Halloween costumes so that that mask is incorporated in there. So there are lots of good things that people can come up with, I'm sure.
Well, and they, they need to not rely on just an old, traditional Halloween mask for this year too, right?
Yes, that is correct. And, you know, and there are different Halloween, you know, masks that are coming. They are recommending not to double up on masks. But I, you know, I think that people will have to assess what type of costume they have and, and what's safe for, for them in that realm. Just keep that in mind that they are recommending for breathing reasons that you not kind of double up on masks.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of the hard work that went into putting together our testing site and everything that you and your staff do every single day and the Health Board and Dr. Sharp. Thank you to everyone. We appreciate having you every week giving an update. It's very helpful.
Thank you, and thanks for your support and, and everybody's help in, in every way. From EMA, Allison and Kate are always helpful. Angie Purdy is always helpful. Legal, you know, the list goes on and on. So we're, we're very grateful. And, you know, Jordan and the auditor, I'll give a shout out to them too. They've been very helpful with us, very busy and preoccupied. They've been very gracious.
That's excellent. And, and I will note too that it's really important for folks to get their flu shot and, and especially this year more than ever. So that's going to be an important and very important.
Absolutely.
Right. Thank you so much. We'll now turn to emergency management, Allison Moore. Ms. Moore, what do you have for us this morning?
Good morning. Good morning. I first just want to say again, thanks to all the collaboration for that new testing site. You know, it is just an extreme amount of work behind the scenes, just for the public to be aware. As I'm sure they know, but that goes into the planning and to making sure that everything is ready for that site before it can be, before those doors can be open and we can start serving the public and testing individuals at that site. And we're very fortunate that we get to be a part of that and try to help the Health Department as they need it. And so we are readily available and have been helping them with that. And then also to piggyback on Ms. Cottle's report about Halloween, we do have a list of various fire departments that are willing to follow CDC guidelines. And so if you are looking for a safe place that you know will be following CDC guidelines, there's a list of addresses and those stations on the county website. And you can go to that at co.munro.in.us and check those out. They will be open and readily available while their supplies last. So mention that as well. We have several blood drives scheduled. Some of these are going to be repeated dates, but I'm also going to go ahead and mention the November and the December dates just because we're, we're diving into October pretty deep. So we have two scheduled for October. They are October twenty-second from between ten and three, and October twenty-eighth between two and seven. And then we also have a November and a December date scheduled that will happen. They are November the ninth and December the twenty-first. Both of those dates are during the daytime between ten and three. All four of those sites are at the Monroe County Convention Center. And you can register for those donation appointment time at redcross.org. If our evening spot here in October is successful, which we are hoping that it is and people are in fact signing up for it, then we'll, we will add a November and a December evening time slot as well. So right now we have four. We could potentially have six blood drives between now and the end of the year. And we are hoping that between the start of COVID and now that we will collect enough blood to save a thousand lives. So we encourage people in the community that can make that donation to make that appointment for us. Our office continues to serve of our, our departments, our county departments and trying to update their COOP plans. We've had several Zoom calls with some department heads this week and several more in the upcoming weeks to gather some information and continue to get those plans up to date. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
No. How's your vehicle holding up with all the driving you're doing?
I have had to schedule more oil changes than I normally do.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for everything that you are doing, your, your staff are doing. Appreciate all your hard work every day throughout this entire pandemic from the start till now. And in the future, we know there's more coming. Thank you so much. Now we'll turn to Lisa Ridge, Public Works Director. Yes. Good morning. You have an update for us?
Um, not too much. Actually, we're still paving. We're finishing up Walker Lane and Old Dutch Church this week. And then we'll be going into different areas for full debt patching, which is various areas around the county starting next week. We've set up, we have a lot of new employees. We've set up snowplow training for the first week of November. So I'm going to switch gears to, to get into some winter updates. So that's all I have.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not right now. Just, the paving's happening.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, I hope you get those new trucks in soon to do the training with.
We actually have all nine dump trucks at this point. There's some issues that our mechanics actually had found on a couple of the new ones where a bolt was actually rubbing a fuel tank. So actually, they've been, Kenworth and Palmer Truck has been great to work with, and they've replaced all the fuel tanks that had that slight little damage on them. So kudos to our mechanics for finding that. And they've switched around where the bolt is. And so we have all new nine dump trucks and plows ready to go. So we thank you for, for that and helping get, get some new equipment on the lot.
Absolutely. Um, and let's turn now to, thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. We're going to talk to you in a moment. Let's turn now to Washington Township Trustee, Ms. Uli. Do you have an update for us on the Township Assistance Fund?
Yes, I do.
Good morning.
The COVID Committee did meet yesterday. That's a subsection of the Township Association comprised of Bloomington Township, Perry Township, and myself. And so we did approve the allocations, which would be September allocations for our, in our October meeting. And I believe I, that I sent that out to everybody. But just to go over it, you can see that in August, when we, when we started dispersing from the fund, that Perry and Bloomington had, they instantly had claims. September saw a decrease in the amount of claims, which was interesting because that was when we were reaching the end of the moratorium. And we were expecting that the claims would increase in September. In October, they did increase. And in fact, as we were, we suspected all along, the hardest-hit townships are going to be Bloomington and Perry. And as such, for the October dispersment, Perry Township has requested fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty cents. That brings the total that they have requested from this COVID fund to twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Bloomington Township did not increase in October. They actually decreased again. And so for October, their requested amount was one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-nine cents, bringing the total that Bloomington Township has requested to date to eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and six cents. What we did see for October, representing September, was for the first time, both Van Buren and Richland Townships did have claims. Van Buren Township had a claim totaling two thousand, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And Richland had a combined claim of six thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. So all totaled between the four townships, we have used thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents of, of our allotments. And I had requested another dispersment so that I would be able to pay out those Octobers. We did meet yesterday, and one of the questions that was raised was that we know that this grant kind of went through December. And we're hoping that that can be looked at again in December and may be carried forward. Because what we're seeing is that once the heating bills start coming in, we have, what, what the townships are experiencing is not necessarily people who are without funds, but people who have taken pay cuts due to COVID, who have been up until now able to rely on their emergency funds and their friends and family to pay these bills and to keep caught up. What we're assuming is going to happen November and December are months when cash tends to be tight anyway universally. And so we're hoping that, because we're going to see increases coming up, that that can be extended over through January and February, especially since we're assuming that there's going to be a surge of COVID-related cases in October and November. This just doesn't seem to be going away. So, so that, that was something that, that the committee wanted me to ask, that that be considered to carry over into two thousand and twenty-one. And that also, none of the, we had allocated, and I spoke with this back in September about this, that the way we had allocated it was a combination of the Alice and the AFR and their actual budgets. And so the only township that's actually coming close to hitting their allocation from this fund is Perry. And what we discussed in committee yesterday was again, there are a lot of townships like Washington who are not utilizing this fund simply because we have funds already allocated to COVID that we are using. And so when it comes to the point where Perry and Bloomington and the other bigger townships are reaching those cats, we're going to meet again as a Township Association and, and again, come to the agreement that that fund, that we can reallocate the funds that aren't being used by the, the smaller townships so that the bigger townships have the ability to continue helping. Because, I mean, as we know, especially Perry and Bloomington, those are the biggest townships, and they also have the lowest income levels. So they're, they're the most that are going to be affected. So that is pretty much all that I have. Thank you again for all this.
Yeah, thank you. And it's, it's really heartening to hear that we're, we're keeping people in their homes and keeping utilities on and getting folks through this crisis. So for your question, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to council and we'll have a conversation about how we can find a way to continue this program or some semblance of it after January first. And, and the other thing I will note is, according to Ms. Purdy, who just sent us a message, your check is ready for the next dispersment.
Excellent.
So if you'd like to pick it up today, yeah, if you'd like to pick it up today, it's available for you.
Excellent. I will reach out to her and make those arrangements.
Great. Let's see if Commissioner Jones has any questions or comments.
I really just said I'm so glad that the trustees and the council and the commissioners were all able to work together to create this fund. And I really hope that people who are in need are taking advantage of it. At this time of year, I would hate to see anyone become homeless or even without heat or electricity. It's, it's just really good to know that people do have this backup.
Actually, it's a wonderful resource.
It is. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, I didn't know some of the information you gave us about the breakdown in the different townships and stuff. That's, that's really eye-opening. But also thank you for working on this to make it possible to, to get this done for people.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's a, it's a really collaborative project. And I'm so proud of our Township Trustees and council and the way we've all worked together. So really, really good, good. It's sad that we need it, but it's good that we have it and that it's ready and there for people. And as Commissioner Jones said, if anybody is, is possibly struggling to pay bills for the basic necessities of life, that they should reach out to their Township Trustee. Every township, every county resident has a Township Trustee, whether you live in the city or not, or the town or not. It doesn't matter. You all have a trustee. So great. Thank you so much for being with us today, Ms. Uli, and thanks for the accounting. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks. Is there any other departmental update? Ms. Delfman, did you have an?
I, I don't really have an update. I'd just like to piggyback on Ms. Uli's comments. As the, as your veteran service officer, I'm very cognizant of these funds that are available in, in the townships. And the only negative comment that I have is that their caseworkers are so busy that they're having trouble keeping up with the influx, especially in Bloomington Township, which is, as Ms. Uli said, the biggest township we have and the most populous. So, good job. We out here in the world know that the Township Trustees have it, and we're glad that they do. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate that. Excellent. Any other departmental updates? Okay. So if not, then we will move on to general public comments. Just comment for items that are not on our agenda. And if you'd like to participate, go to the Participants tab or go to the bottom of your screen and click on Raise Hand. There are no hands raised. Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. With that, we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for October seventh, two thousand and twenty, and the continued meeting on October ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, additions, edits? Okay. Thank you. Thank you again to Ms. Freeman for, for holding it all together and keeping us updated on our minutes. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for October seventh and ninth, two thousand and twenty?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Minutes are approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims document, accounts payable October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Miller?
Good morning. The total for claims was four million, five hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. The majority of that was for lit distribution, which had a grand total of three million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents of that amount was specifically for lit public safety distribution. In addition to that, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents was for Cheryl Underwood for tax sale surplus and redemption. One hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred dollars was for STR building resources. $183,400 was for STR Building Resources LLC, which was for five pay applications for the showers building exterior wall project. And finally, $128,395.75 was for Stone Belt, which was for the 2020 fourth quarter payment.
Right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Let's go ahead and see if there are questions or comments. Commissioner Jones?
No, there are.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just want people to know that we're just moving money when we talk about these distributions, that's things that are already allocated. It's just, yeah.
Right. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Again, go to the bottom of your screen and click on Raise Hand if you'd like to make a comment. There are no hands raised? Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approval of the claims docket accounts payable October 14th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Claims are approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we'll move on to new business.
Move to approve emergency management letter of intent regarding mitigation plan update.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And Ms. Moore has apparently left our meeting. I don't see her here. Hmm. Interesting. Looking through the list here.
Well, if she is not here, I think I could probably speak on this.
I'm just verifying here. Yep, she is not on this meeting anymore. Something must have come up. So yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Cockrell. Thank you.
This is a letter to the Indiana Department of Homeland Security indicating that we intend to participate in updating our mitigation plans for the county and it lists various entities within the county. And this is being done so that we can hopefully get some grant money and match funding, 25% match funding for in-kind services for that process. So this is a, for that process to get some outside funding for this project.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, when I read the list of organizations, this is a lot to try to get everybody together and it's a pretty big deal.
Right. Very important to have this updated, so I'm glad that we're moving forward with it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Please go to the bottom of the screen and click Raise Hand. There are no hands raised? Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approving the emergency management letter of intent regarding the mitigation plan update?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
To approve YSB regarding application for 1503 grant. Fun name, 1503 YSB grant, fund number 9111, in the amount of $38,738, which is the grant.
Right. We have a motion and a second. We have Ms. Nasby here. I'm assuming to talk about this and we've got a number of items to deal with today, but let's start with this one. Welcome.
Good morning. Yes, I'm Gretchen Nasby speaking on behalf of Vicky Tevinar, Executive Director. This is a grant that we get from Indiana Youth Services Association. We've had it for over 10 years. And this covers about half of our full-time case manager salary and benefits, plus supplemental funding for our hourly staff in the shelter as well. So this is a good grant for us to have and it provides a match with some of our J-Lit funding as well.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'm glad you're getting this grant again.
We are too.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, nice work.
Yeah, it's really great. Thank you for bringing this forward. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised? Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the motion to approve the YSB application for the 1503 grant?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve to extend the 2020 Lamar contract for Safe Place program outreach. Fun name, runaway homeless and professional services. Fund number 8120-30013 in the amount of $1,300.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Nasby, would you like to talk about this?
Sure. So again, Lamar provides billboards for us for our Safe Place outreach program. This is actually adding an additional billboard during the contract period. We added this just because we had funds that were supposed to go to other things, but due to COVID-related cancellations, we needed to find other ways to expend that money. So we chose to extend some of these contracts and make additions.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I was wondering if you might happen to know about approximately how many youth take advantage of this? Maybe in the last year or so? And do you have a sense if it's gone up at all?
Sure. So right now, I know from the percentage from 2018 to 2019 was an increase of 62%. And from that time, we actually did see an increase in being able to be in schools and additional online outreach campaigns that we were doing. That was the difference between those two years. So what I'm hoping is that's directly affected the number of kids taking, being able to access Safe Place. What we're anticipating due to COVID is that we are probably going to see more placements, not necessarily just specific to Safe Place, but more kids accessing our shelter. We have 10 to 11 kids right now, which is pretty high for us, generally speaking, and we've had that over a period of time. So we're hoping that as more kids know about it, we're lucky here in Monroe County, kids have seen it for a very long time, that those numbers, they are familiar with, they know Safe Place is there, they know they can get help should they need it. And we just want to make sure that they're all aware.
Thank you. Very good.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Giffens?
I just wondered if there was any anticipated changes now that MCCSC is basically back in full time and RBB is moving to four days a week. So is there any shift that goes on with your programming because of that?
Shift in terms of programming, not really. We have been open the entire time of COVID. We'd had to take extra precautions for any kids coming in. So we still have always maintained being able to work with kids should they need help. Our outreach in terms of working with the schools probably will change and that will be something we'll have to continue to work with, with the schools, because my goal is to make sure it's something that works for them. And they're already doing so much and figuring out how to function in this time. So we do what we can because school is the number one place, youth access Safe Place. So making sure our schools do have the materials and they are presented in a way that is safe for the schools and for the kids. So we'll be working with them to see how we can do that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Great. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the motion to approve the extension of the 2020 Lamar contract for Safe Place programming outreach?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve to extend the Comcast contract for Safe Place program outreach. Fun name, runaway homeless and professional services. Fund number 8120 and 30013 in the amount of $13,000. Yeah. Excuse me, $1,300. There you go.
Thank you. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Nasby?
So again, this is just, it's expending funds that we had that were not able to be used due to COVID-related cancellations. Again, Comcast provides actual commercials and ads for us on online platforms as well as youth and family targeted cable channels. Lost it. So again, we'll just have an additional month of ads that we're running through them.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Oh, not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I looked through the channels that they advertise on, I realized why I've never seen some of these ads.
They do a lot of work to target specific audiences and so they'll have the channels, but then they can really break it down into timing and into shows. And I'm glad someone else does that, not me. So they give that package to me and they present it in a very concise way so I can just make choices. But we reach about 8,000 to 10,000 people a month with Comcast.
Good idea.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the extension of the Comcast contract for Safe Place program outreach?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. We have one more.
To approve addition to 2020 National Cinema Media contract for Safe Place program outreach. Fun name, runaway homeless and professional services. Fund number 8120/30013 in the amount of $1,300.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Nasby, would you tell us about this one?
Sure. So again, we're extending these contracts or making additions for those funds. So this one is kind of neat because obviously movie theaters are changing a little bit, but they have added an online component. So they're still able to reach audiences through different online platforms. I wish I could explain all the technical information, but I think I frustrated our vendor for me asking so many questions. And they finally just kind of said, here's a document to give to other people. But it's a great way to reach kids if we're looking for activities, looking for, again, ways that we can tell them about the program, remind them about the program, especially for older kids, just making sure they know we're here for them.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
So I just wondered if there's much attendance even at the theaters these days?
They're reopening and I was on a call recently with the CEO with National Cinema Media and several other, the movie chain theaters. And so they're taking a lot of precautions. They'll be reopening, but what I've really kind of banked on is having that online component that they're adding to their services for clients now. Because I think that actually gives a lot more value to the money that we spend because we can also see return from the data that they can gather. So they collect and are able to get, somehow they get on your, they're able to access like ads on phones. And so like on phones or on devices and then they can run your banners just like they would in the movie theaters. They can run them on personal devices as well. And so we're kind of able to move that. Well, once you have that ability, then they can actually see how many people saw it. They can track, you know, the amount of time that they watched it or did they click on the ad, did they close it? So we have a lot more data to use. So I've been really happy with the results from those campaigns because of that, because it's just a little more return on investment, in my opinion, for knowing what we spend.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. There are no hands raised? Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the addition to the 2020 National Cinema Media contract for Safe Place program outreach?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nasby. We appreciate you. I'm actually going to take a step back here. Ms. Moore has been able to join us again. She wanted to talk a little bit about the item we approved and something that we just had a quick exchange about on text that's come up. Ms. Moore?
Hi, good morning again. Thank you for backtracking and letting me join. First off, the mitigation grant, we have to update our mitigation grant every five years. Ours will not need to be updated until 2023. So we're still plenty of time away, but we get funding from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security and it is time for them to apply. So what I was asking was that you would be in support of signing a letter of intent stating that we would, in fact, want their funding. And then assuming they get funding from the federal government, it will be a pass-through from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security to us. And then we also have to list several partners that will play a role in being a part of that planning committee. And so those were listed within that letter of intent as well. And I have reached out to many agencies that are very willing to collaborate with our office in order to make the best and most efficient updates for our mitigation plan. Any questions from you guys for me in regards to that plan?
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you for trying to hurt all those cats.
And I guess I should extend my thank you. I hear that Jeff chimed in with what he possibly knew about it and was able to help out a little bit too. So thanks, Jeff. We're such a great team.
The letter in the cover sheet were very clear too, so that helps a lot.
It did.
Yeah. So would you like to tell us about what we were?
Yeah. So then also at 11 this morning, I have a conversation, going to have a conversation with our forestry at the DNR. We have some high winds coming in. We are still pretty, pretty dry. I know a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned with you guys that there was a possibility we may have to go on a burn ban for Monroe County. At the time, our Fire Chiefs Association and the DNR had suggested that we weren't ready for that yet and we will, would continue to monitor. And so I have spoke with our fire chiefs this morning. They are kind of just in favor of going either way. It is pretty dry. They know that. They would like to hear from the DNR and so we have that scheduled later today. And I just want the public to know we're monitoring that. And based on what their recommendation will be, we will put a burn ban in order if that is their recommendation. And so if that happens, then we will send out a notification system or a notification through our mass notification system. So people are aware of that and we will also, of course, contact the media so that people will be aware. In the meantime, we do encourage you not to start fires regardless of if we're on a burn ban or not. And if it's something that you can hold off a few weeks until we get some wetter ground, we would greatly appreciate that. We aren't currently under that burn ban, but it could potentially happen later today.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I had one and I've forgotten what it was. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, just thank you for staying on top of this.
Sure. One of the questions we do get asked a lot, especially since it's camping season and we do have many state parks. If we are under a burn ban, it is still allowed to have your campfires in a fire pit ring. So that is a question that we get asked. That's probably the most popular question that we get asked this time of year when we're under a burn ban. So that will, state parks will still allow fire pits, fires and fire pits, even if the county is under a burn ban. So.
Right. That's a good point.
That's a good point. Right? Yeah. And this all started because we got, saw a weather statement that came across from National Weather Service that we're expecting winds of forty miles per hour and, and the humidity is very low right now. So that's, that's, and also the long time, we're really kind of in a mini drought here in this, in this part of the state. As you tell by all the brown leaves on my ground, it's not a pretty fall yet. But so hopefully I trust you all will do the right thing. And yeah, if anybody wants to sign up for one of the alerts, to be on the alert system, just go to the homepage and find the megaphone and sign in. You can get email, text alerts. You, you choose how you want to be alerted. It's not just for weather. We do send out any new health orders or, and other information. Some of the water departments also use it to issue boil orders. So it's a very helpful device to have to keep informed about what's going on in our community and staying safe. Thank you for that. Thanks for coming back on. It was a busy morning for you. All right. Thank you for indulging me, my colleagues. And we will now move on to the next item, please.
To approve an agreement with medics and an independent contractor, fund name to be decided, fund number to be decided in an amount not to exceed four hundred thirty thousand.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. I don't know if Ms. Cottle wants to come back, but I know Mr. Cockrell's listed here because he reviewed the contract.
Yes. This is, and I think Ms. Cottle earlier explained about our new testing sites and a lot of the information there. This is part and parcel with that project. This is the group that is going to actually do the, hire the people to do the testing and to get, and to go through that whole process. A lot of the to be determined fund names and fund numbers is that this is a partnership. We are going to receive funds from a state grant, Indiana University, the city of Bloomington, as well as in-kind benefits from IU Health for this project. So we could say to be determined, which would be some of it. And then it would also be various. So there's, there's a lot of different moving pieces on how this is being funded. But essentially this is for the people who are going to, to be in the clinic administering the tests and, and their expenses. I just, for a full clarity, the, a lot of the equipment, the personal protective equipment and things like that, that's part of the state grant. So the state's going to be providing that. So really this is a, this, this whole project is a combination of a lot of different people working together to get this going. And this is the actual provider agreement portion of that.
Right. Thank you so much. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Ms. Cottle?
Mr. Cockrell did a great job. The sites, this allows us to simply contract with someone to bring in, in the individuals to do the staffing so that we're not having to go through that piece. So we will monitor it. We will work with them, but they will handle the scheduling of all the staff.
Right. Very good. That's a great help. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, the, the contract was very much focused on safety and it sounds like it'll be a very safe place for people to go to get tested. And it was just very reassuring.
Commissioner Giffens? Comments, questions?
Yeah, there was a, there was a portion on the second page of the contract that has had a red overlay and I couldn't read what was in there just because of the way it scanned and stuff. Was that anything important that we all needed to know about?
I would say that, that what, what one, yes, it's important because those are the areas where, where we had asked for changes and those were the highlighted changes that they included in the document on the last go around on the fee section, which would have been the, the first of the large red blocks.
Number five.
We had them add that the, they have that the pricing, and I think you could see the pricing per, per contractor in the exhibit. But we had them include language that this is going to run through the end of June two thousand twenty-one and that the total cost of this should not exceed four hundred and thirty thousand, which is what we expect the budget to be for this and what we have, we have made the budget. The next one is kind of their warranty clause. And so we made them make a few changes in that to make it clear and, and so that we, we can move forward. I also think that is also the area where they had some language about supervision and things like that. And you know, I guess from our perspective, I think the health department is going to generally oversee the, the operations and, and work with them, but they're not going to be part of the day-to-day operations of it. So that, that language was originally, hey, you're going to supervise these people doing this function. The new language is, is not that. It's, it's more akin to what the state has with their, their site and that you guys are going to run the clinic and, and run the testing site and you're going to do all those things. We will have general oversight in that if we hear problems here, we are concerned, we're going to go and work with you and let them know what, what they are and we're going to resolve those. But we're not responsible for having someone on site to oversee any of the, the contractors. And so that's what that second red block changes were.
Thank you so much. Any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the agreement with medics for the, for the testing site?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve the 2021 Sheriff's Merit Deputies Contract, unnamed county general and public safety lit, a number one thousand and eleven seventy in an amount dependent on the length of service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, you worked very hard on this, on this project. So would you like to tell us about it?
Yeah, yes. I guess from a philosophical standard, I, I, I think that the, the biggest change in this contract as opposed to previous contracts was that we are including educational incentive pay in this and that, and that if the person has a two-year degree, they will receive a five hundred dollars. If they have a four-year degree, they'll receive two thousand dollars. And if they have a master's degree, they would, they will receive an additional twenty-five hundred per year. I think conceptually that was the biggest change from the last. When, when we look at the cost of this compared to this year's contract, I think we, we should also include in this conversation that the previous contract, and this carries through that philosophy, is that we will relook at the three most comparable counties in the, in the state to make sure that we have kind of pay, we look at our pay with, as it relates to external markets. And so to make sure that those are, are those markets and that we're not falling behind from a market perspective for the salaries. The total cost difference between kind of, if we looked at last year's pay versus what, what's in here in pay is roughly two hundred and thirty thousand for that external review. And then another twenty to thirty thousand for the incentive pays. There was also a change in field training officers where we're reducing the numbers, but we're increasing the amount per field training officers from the previous contracts. Those are, those are the, the major changes. We've included language in here that reflects that if the county makes a decision to change how it looks at a benefit time, that, that those changes will, will be addressed. So we only have one system for that concept.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Thanks for all your hard work and many hours put in on this.
It's been a tough year to, to do a lot of things, especially a collective bargaining agreement. So thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Well, yeah, it wasn't just that. You had to collect information from other places and all kinds of stuff. Thanks for the, I know you put in a lot of hours on this.
Yeah, you really did. And you know, it's a lot of different opinions and, and thoughts and ideas to compress together into one document and, and get everybody on board. And this is, just to clarify, and that this is contingent upon council approval for the appropriation.
Yes. So the three, the three groups have to approve this and we typically have the sheriff sign off on it as well because these are, these are his staff. But it requires the council, the commissioners and the bargaining unit.
Got it. Thank you so much. All right. With that, let's see if there are any questions. Just click on the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please go ahead and call the role on the 2021 Sheriff's Merit Deputies Contract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-seven to amend ordinances eighty-six dash oh nine, eighty-six dash oh six and eighty-six dash twelve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning again. So the delete, the eighty-six oh nine is the speed limit ordinance. We're deleting two locations to lower the speed limit and to, in a couple of areas, one being that road, Rockport Road to Clear Creek Trail will be thirty-five mile per hour. On Clear Creek, we're also lowering the speed limit on Benton Court, Benton Drive, Cox Drive, Height Road and Viking Ridge Road to twenty-five mile per hour. And then we are adding a stop sign at Turner Drive for Wayport Road. And then we are also amending the ordinance for yield sign. And this will take care of the yield locations for the signs that are in the new roundabout at Gordon Pike and Roger Street. All of these were approved unanimously at the last traffic commission meeting and they are all warranted by the MUTCD. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Not right now.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Giffens?
So basically we're just trying to slow everybody down, right?
You try and do that by signage, but it doesn't.
Is, is it common to put yield signs at roundabouts still? Or is, is that, is that going to continue? It just seems like we've, we've all seen them now and had to drive them now, but we're, that's still a normal practice.
It is. It is a practice to have those signage in the roundabout, just for people basically that's not familiar with a roundabout.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that. All right. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item.
There are no hands raised.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-seven?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, for sticking with us, Ms. Ridge, and for all your hard work and for the traffic commission's hard work too. Thanks. All right. With that, we'll move on to the next item.
Approve Fleming Interior Group Agreement for Health Department Renovation Project, unnamed twenty seventeen GO bond, fund number forty-eight ten in the amount of seventy-seven thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a seconds. Ms. Purdy, good morning.
Good morning. This agreement is so that we can put the furniture systems into the health building that's currently be, being renovated. And these, these furniture systems are our desks and tables and various office furniture that is needed for the various, I don't want to say departments within the health department. So then these, these will be purchased through the state's QPA for Kimball.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'm sure that the staff of the health department is going to be pretty excited about being able to move back into their renovated building with all the new furniture and everything.
It couldn't have happened at a worse time though for them.
But it would be bad to put it off too. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I was amazed at the detail that's in this contract. Like three dollars and ninety-six cents for a certain key and things like that. I mean, wow.
Yeah. The, the, all the trim that was listed, I was like, I have no idea what this is for. Yeah, I don't know what this two-inch trim is for, but okay. Yeah. It's, and when, when is the, what's the approximate date we're looking at?
I have not heard. Actually, Penny and I, the last time we met with the Fleming Group and then with Michael Chamberlain, the architect, I actually haven't, I didn't even ask them about when it might possibly be going in there. Penny, have you heard anything?
I have not. I have not. You know, originally it was between Thanksgiving and Christmas and they got a little bit of a late start. So I'm thinking early twenty twenty-one, but we will just be thrilled whenever it is and hoping for beautiful weather, whatever week it is that we have to move.
Yes. Yes. Which is, as we get in further, it's less likely to be warm. But yes. No, that's excellent. Did you have any other, anything else you wanted to add, Ms. Cottle?
No, we, we are very excited about it. You know, not only will it be, you know, beautiful, it's new. We have lots of piecemealed, very old desks that were falling apart. I, I will honestly, I have staff who are saying, we are getting new chairs, right? Cause I, I'm hoping my chair makes it to then. So, and when somebody would leave, you know, there'd be a musical chairs literally of, you know, where, who's got the best chair and can we move them around? So we're very excited about that. And it will just be, it will be nice for the public too. It will be, I think, feel more welcoming, more comfortable for them. And because it's more comfortable for the staff as well, that will mean that, you know, that just comes forward, right? So I think we're just very excited about that. And it will be a nice, I'm, I'm just going to think about it as a reward for twenty twenty.
That's a good way to think about it. Excellent. Yeah. Very good. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment on this.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the contract with the Fleming Interior Group for the Health Department Renovation Project?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
All right. And that's the contract related to Kimball. And now we have another related contract.
Move to approve Fleming Interior Group Agreement for Health Department Renovation Project, unnamed twenty seventeen GO bond, fund number forty-eight ten in the amount of five thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Purdy.
Okay. This is, as you indicated, part of the same project. However, these vertical filing cabinets are not purchased from Kimball. So this, this will be paid directly through to Fleming.
And there's also the stand-up desk.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Variable desk. Yeah. Which is great. Um, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm, I'm pleased to hear about the stand-up desks. I think those really help people quite a bit.
People like them.
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I would also like the idea of the stand-up desk, but also I think that just even new chairs will reduce fatigue and just make it a better place to work for people. So I'm pleased that we're able to do this.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment on this item. And as we're looking for hands to be raised, I'll note that this is coming out of the twenty seventeen bonds. So it's sometimes these bonds take a while to get, the projects can, sometimes take a while to get completed.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Fleming Interior Group Agreement for the Health Department Renovation Project?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We don't have any appointments today, but a few announcements. We are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. And we are especially, but any board or commission, please apply on our website, co.munro.in.us. But we're especially looking for affordable housing, environmental commission, human rights commission. The Monroe Fire District specifically, we need people who don't live in the city limits, but live in the townships of Bloomington and Van Buren. And it should be someone who has experience with budgets or fire departments. It's a very niche kind of applicant. The Women's Commission and the South Central Regional Sewer District. Please note as well that for election information, to vote early or to vote on Election Day, please go to co.munro.in.us for all the information, including an interactive map for precincts and polling locations and the early voting dates. The location for early voting, which is, which has already begun, is at 401 West 7th on the main floor. And you can't miss it. There's a lot of signs all around it. And I will note that they have been busy, but the lines have been moving. But they've had 800 to almost 1,000 every day going into early voting. And it's really great that people are participating in their democracy. So it's, it's very safe. It's very efficient. But please, if you're planning to vote early, just plan on, you might have to wait a little bit. The wait times are not very long, and they're certainly not long compared to what we're seeing. Other people have to go through in other parts of the country where, you know, I saw yesterday that Atlanta had, you know, a six-hour wait time to vote. So let's, you know, please just be patient, just plan, just plan for a little bit of extra time, but it won't take that long. The other thing I will note is that, yes, we did set the Halloween hours for 6:00 to 8:00 PM on October 31st. And again, you can see our website, co.munro.in.us for guidelines for costumes and events and for further information about fire stations that are participating. And again, just a reminder to, for anyone that's having a difficult time making ends meet, to please contact their township trustee, the sooner the better, because we do have the ability to help. We are also providing CARES funding for businesses and social service organizations for COVID-related expenses, non-payroll, that they did not budget for. And as of last Thursday, so almost a week ago now, as of last Thursday, the total CARES funding granted to businesses from Monroe County was $143,670.32. And an additional $15,551 has gone to taxing units. And that's the, mainly right now, the Monroe County Public Library. We have, we had a cap for the businesses and social service organizations of $10,000. Some of them have requested an increase. And we made a decision to go ahead and increase the cap to $20,000 per agency or business. So if you have any questions or if you'd like to apply, it is right on our homepage. The application and all the information, again, co.munro.in.us. I will also note for folks that yesterday, we had a meeting with, in conjunction with the planning commission to consider a mediation agreement. And that meeting was continued till 3:05 PM today. You'll find it on our calendar, meeting calendar. So if you missed that meeting or you just read a little bit about it, you're welcome to attend. It is, it is a public meeting. It's held, of course, via Zoom. That means that the storm water board meeting that usually starts at 3:00 is going to start after the other meeting. So this is the story of our, our lives in COVID. But we couldn't be at more than one meeting at once anyway before. So we're, we're having the same issue now, except on Zoom. So let's see if my colleagues have anything else they would like to add. Commissioner Giffens?
I wanted to just take a minute and talk about early voting just a little bit more. They had a record yesterday for this voting cycle of over 1,000 people come to early voting. So far, they've had, as of yesterday, 5,614 people early vote at Election Central. They had, as of Monday, sent out absentee ballots to more than 13,000 residents, and they've received over 7,600 of them back, meaning we've already had over, already had over 13,000 people vote so far, which is, is really, really good. I also wanted to say that we put stuff out on our county commissioners Facebook page about free programming at Ivy Tech that is just as a result of COVID, to try to help people and keep them going. They, they are offering programming in advanced manufacturing, building and construction, health sciences, information technology and business technology, and in transportation and logistics. And these are eight-week programs, I believe they're certificate programs, to help people going, especially they're, while people are struggling, there are jobs that are going unfilled, and they're, they're skilled jobs. And so these are ways to boost your, your credentials, basically. And, and it's free programming, which is not available for free at other times. So I urge residents to, to look at that. It's on the Ivy Tech homepage as well. And it's just people helping people again, which is what's been going on in Monroe County.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great program. And it's nice that the certificates are being offered, the programs are being offered for certificates at no cost to students. So if you need a new job skill to get a new job, now's a great time to do it. I will also note that for those who had requested a ballot by mail and received it, but have not returned it yet, please return it. And you may do that by dropping it off at Election Central or, which is at 401 West 7th Street. Or you may drop it in the mail, but it's always better, especially with the problems that the post office has had, not of its own making, please don't blame the carriers, that if you, if you wish, you should, you, and you can, you should drop your ballot off. And, and you have to do that yourself, or there are very specific, very few specific people who can do that for you. So please make sure that your ballot gets back in time to be counted. It's very important. And with that, we're going to adjourn our meeting, but we're going to leave this meeting open because Ms. Purdy has a bid to open. And we'll go ahead and let you get on with that, but our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Guys, okay, we, the county legal department received one field bid today at 9:40 AM from Waddle Brothers. And this bid is for the Monroe County Parks and Recreation, Limestone Greenway Safety Rail. Okay, so this is from, as I said, Waddle Brothers. The base bid is 72,300. And let me see if there's any additional information. Doesn't appear to be the case. So we've received one bid from Waddle Brothers at 72,300. And I believe the intention is next week, we will be assigning the, the award. And then we have Andy Canoust, who's on. Andy, would you like to speak to this project? Andy's with Bledsoe, Ritter, Cooper, and James?
Yes, thank you, Angie. I'm the project engineer for this project. And it's really just an extension of the existing cedar fencing that was installed with the Limestone Greenway project last year. And there were some areas of the trail that were identified as, you know, having kind of a hazardous edge condition. So the extension of the safety rail is just to protect those edges and keep people from flying off on their bikes if they're not paying attention. So, so that's, so, yeah, we've got, I think, a few, 1,000, maybe 1,500 feet of, of new fencing that'll be constructed this fall. And, and we're happy to have a good bid from Waddle Brothers.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, is there anything else we need to do at this point in time?
I think we'll, we'll look through them, and then we will put it on the agenda next week, unless we don't. I guess. But that's the anticipation.
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Andy, for making it here. I know we were a little scattered all over this morning about this project. So it's good that you were able to join.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.